Hello, council members, and gentlemen members of the public. We are channeled into a committee of daily services in the name of this debate. First item on the agenda, apologies for absence.
I'm Mr. Martin, having turned in Kevin Thompson Jr.
Item two, declaration of interests.
I would like to declare the interesting item, Mr. Chair. I would like to remind you, and I don't think they will be able to prove it.
That's councillor Smith, that's been ordered. Item three, open questions.
No, I'm not seeing.
Item three here, we have a motion from councillor Mrs. A Madison. The bottom of the motion is, of course, only general, I'll pass over to councillor Madison.
First chair, the motion, and I've got an opportunity to speak on this after any debate.
I'll follow standard ones as well.
To consider forming a subcommittee to look at ways in which the town council can keep the legacy in memory of Tullybridge School alive in the community and to take opinion from the trust on the possibility, feasibility of salvaging some of the historic and memorable features of the school that can be incorporated into an architectural feature within our town. Now, this motion was submitted by me prior to Christmas, and it's unfortunate that none of the questions that are submitted, I wasn't able to get any replied prior to Christmas. It was only after we returned, and I was expecting this motion to be on the finance and general purposes, that I was informed it would be on tonight's committee. With the non-answer to any of the questions, there is still information that hasn't been obtained, and I do see information last week, I could approach anyone with regard to this particular question. And unfortunately, one of the officers from Durham County Council hasn't been able to return my phone calls, so I haven't got answers. But I do believe that it is important that we do consider Tullybridge School and have a feature of the school within the township. It had the centenary in 2012, hundred years, and it's got a long history, there's a lot of people attending the school, and there's up to four generations that have been there. So it is important, and I do know that the discussions that took place in the main hall with regard to Tullybridge, there was a lot of emotion there, and I think that we've got to consider the people of our town, if the situation is occurred that, I'm calling Durham or Tullybridge is demolished. And one of the questions I did pose with councillor Gellard, and I don't know whether he was able to establish any answers to this, was with regard to whether or not there was any structures within the school that we could use, I don't know whether he were able to establish any answers to that, councillor Gellard.
I'll allow councillor Gellard, if he wishes to answer that, councillor Smith.
It is important, I do believe that we form a subcommittee and discuss those problems in keeping the legacy. There are other colleagues in the town that have a full importance, and I do think, you know, we should look at implementing something within our town. Thank you.
Okay, so councillor Madison, do you agree with that motion?
It's not a good second motion to express, if I mean, councillor, comments, councillor Gellard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, the demolition of the former Tullybridge School building on Durham Road has been a contentious issue for our county council colleagues and for those within the Spennymoor Community Learning Trust for the last few months. I was first involved in the case when I was invited to meet with the Save the Old Moon Bridge group back in October, where I listened to the concerns of attendees, put myself in their mind to answer difficult questions regarding the proposed demolition. This meeting was also attended by councillor Nelson, or sort of councillor Kevin Thompson, but not councillor Madison. Since then, this council and its standing committees have met on no less than eight separate occasions. Those eight separate occasions where councillor Madison or one of her colleagues in the Spennymoor Independence Group couldn't raise this motion by any of the demolition work commencing. Don't get me wrong, there's no problem at all to base support councillor Madison's suggestion here, but it would seem surprising that someone who was a good man under the Spennymoor Community Learning Trust failed to make a politically short vote in this chamber, asking to set up yet another subcommittee to make inquiries about something that she obviously, she already has the ability to inquire from her colleagues in the trust. Councillor Madison has not thrown herself onto the front line of this issue, as I understand. She sat back and waited to score political points against her group, perhaps she should cast her mind back to the public meeting held in November in this building, where her initial suggestion for what she's suggesting here was meant for the blues and jazz. I wonder if councillor Madison has read comments on social media this week regarding the motion, that it's much too little and much too late, and this is obviously an attempt to gain a bit of glory and maybe a follow shoe or two, I claim credit for a suggestion that's already been raised. Mr. Chairman, previous year's schools in Spennymoor that once existed are now long gone, North Road School, the original St Charles, the Snow Iron Road, and a few. Historical and memorable features of some of these schools are remembered in various ways in their successor's schools, through decorative plaques, old spartan trophies, and of course photographs. I don't find it surprising that when North Road was demolished, or when St Charles was demolished, that there was no such motion from councillor Madison or her then-little Democrat colleagues, perhaps there were not the important things back then to concern councillor Madison. Mr. Chairman, in conclusion, it becomes most of a challenge to follow this motion today. Although it's sad that the school that I attended will soon be gone, its memory will live on in a well-equipped new building that we have at Wilworth Park, a school building that has the potential to provide high-quality education for our children for years to come. As a member of the London body of this school, under the Spennymoor Community Learning Trust, councillor Madison is well positioned to seek opinion about trust regarding the feasibility she suggests, without attempting political point-storing at this town council. Once she's done this, I'm happy to consider town council involvement with such an architectural feature, as mentioned, if and only if, and the bit that I'm not quite satisfied on at the minute, is that this is what the people of Spennymoor want. I only hope that I'm on time, wasting hasn't stuck at the wrong idea. With the demolition of this building underway, councillor Madison should not delay further with this, it's time for advocates for the people to be for politics, instead of just using it as a tagline on our election campaign.
Any other comments, councillor Gellard, before I invite the over of the motion to respond, I'll take comments, councillor Gellard.
Councillor Gellard, there's the word showboating. I've never heard such a display of showboating and sarcasm in my life. If he had a point to make, it was quite clear he could make it without extensive sarcasm and showboard reference. I think, sir, we should learn to talk diplomatically and without sarcasm.
Thank you, Chair. You found the right before I've heard that, councillor Madison? No, councillor Madison, you wish to respond, ready for comments?
Yes, Chair, first of all, I would say to councillor Gellard that Tullybridge School as was, has gone. I'm a member of Whitworth Park and not of Tullybridge, and I'm quite within my rights to speak on that one. Now, as regards to political point-storing, I think in actual fact it is councillor Gellard that's politically point-storing, because unless this council and then didn't inform us as a group of Spennymoor independents, I received notification on the 16th of December that this, the official announcement had been made by Durham County Council with regard to the demolition of the school, and on the same date, I responded to Mrs. Waterston, this town clerk, with questions. So I didn't, I was under no authority to ask any questions until a decision was made as regard to demolition, because prior to then, nobody knew, so far as I'm concerned, unless of course members of the Labour group knew something different to us in our group.
Okay, I got it.
I do take exception to the fact that councillor Gellard is indicating that I am making political point-storing, because I do believe there is himself that has made it quite clear tonight, he's making his own point-storing, thank you.
Okay, very good, councillor Madison, I'm conscious the last term of comments we've tipped a half, going off the topic around the actual motion at Durham County Council group. Town clerk, you indicated you want to...
If I may, just to sort of clarify something that may have been misunderstood in relation to the submission of this motion. Councillor Madison's motion was actually received on the 16th of December. Standing orders require that I have to receive it at each five, three days before the next meeting of the council. Because of the long Christmas break where the office was closed, that affected the computation of the five plea to appeal. On receipt of that email, I did respond to councillor Madison and advise that that was the case, and that to actually bring it forward on to the finance and general purposes agenda, she would need to ask the chairman of the Finance and General Purposes Committee to exercise its discretion to do so. When we got back after the New Year break, councillor Madison seemed to be under the impression that that was my responsibility, and I didn't do that because I didn't think that was my responsibility. So with regard to the issue of regard to time scale and things, regretfully, it was because of the lateness of the motion, that it was too late to get it on to the Finance and General Purposes Agenda, and that's why it wasn't on, and it would have to be taken as a item with the chairman's discretion. As far as I know, no request was made for the chairman to exercise that discretion. I just wanted to clearly let up, because I'm aware that this meeting is being recorded under the new legislation and will eventually feature on social media.
Right, now, I appreciate your quick answer, councillor Madison, and I'm not going to allow this to be sent, as to, with regards as to which agenda this should have been on time. The motion is being moved and settled, we've had comments, the move of the motion's responded, town clerk's clarified, extra critical item regarding the history of this submission of this motion, unless there are any comments on the actual motion that's in front here, fellow members, I'm now going to move to report. What was in favour of councillor Madison's motion? Those again? And any abstentions? Motion is taken, thank you very much. The general item number four, town hall gallery, who are requested to consider a report from the facilities manager, so I'll pass over to Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. The purpose of the report is to advise members of the upper chamber to have a permanent collection of Norman Cornish art that the public to view would purchase, and also to appraise members of some of the regional activities that take place in relation to Norman Cornish, and for members to consider naming the largest of the gallery display areas after Norman Cornish. There's a little bit of background on the gallery that members of obviously be aware of, and above all the gallery, the areas that it actually consists of and how that's made up. There's section on the three around the background of Norman Cornish and his contribution that is made to the town, and to art across all the country and other areas. Under the current position regarding the gallery, members will be aware that for 2015, the gallery is nearly fully let, however, there are currently more buildings in place as yet for 2016. As previously reported to members, many artists now have built on website and Facebook pages from which they sell their work directly to the public. For artists to exhibit on an exhibition basis requires them to commit to a significant amount of their work for a period of time. With many venues now moving away and moving towards providing art to the public, there are a larger variety of artists providing a smaller, limited amount of work. By moving this to this more, it removes any downtime or closure period within the gallery. The current position under Norman Cornish is that following the death of Norman Cornish, there's been regional, national, and international press interest in his life story and his work. A lecture on his life story took place in Spennymoor Town Hall, attracting over 500 visitors. English Heritage are recognising his contribution by placing a blue plaque outside the home in Spennymoor. Beavis Museum are looking to create a new Fifty Street where all of the contents of Norman Cornish's home and his art studio will be settled and in place, and this will take place and scheduled to open in Beavis in 2016. Item six covers the financial position and the current arrangements around commission. Under seven, there's some proposals around the Bob Avdey Art Gallery in terms of what Beavis Museum will present and tell a story of how Norman Cornish lived and worked, and there are currently no plans for a permanent art collection of the public to view his work. It is with this in mind that the family have proposed that the town council consider using the main gallery within the Bob Avdey Art Gallery to host a permanent collection with a limited amount of work for sale. Under the Norman Cornish visitor trail, it's proposed that the town council work in partnership with Durham County Council to develop a cultural trail around Spennymoor based on Norman Cornish paintings of the area. This trail would also complement the proposed permanent collection within the art gallery by starting or finishing the trail of the art gallery. Under the naming of the art gallery, the family have asked that members consider naming the main gallery area within the Bob Avdey Art Gallery after their father. Under section eight, under the proposals, the larger area within the Bob Avdey Art Gallery, it is proposed that from 2016, the main gallery area be allocated to become a permanent collection of Norman Cornish work with some items of work for sale to the public. And it is also proposed that the main gallery area be named after the late Norman Cornish to recognise his contribution to the town. With regards to the other gallery areas, it is proposed that these areas be provided to input an increased number of artists, with them able to exhibit smaller pieces of work, and by doing so, an edible, much varied collection of work be available to the public for sale and increase access to the public through the gallery. In relation to the Cornish trail, it is proposed that approval is given to approach Durham County Council to progress this concept, and for a report to come back to members with any such proposals and ideas that might be identified. Members are recommended to agree to the proposals outlined in sections eight and nine of the report and implement the proposed changes from 2016. It is also recommended that a further report is provided to members on the progress and the timelines following further discussion with the family family. Happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you very much for this, Mr. Chair, comprehensive report. I've had ten hours ahead of me from councillor Gellard, and from councillor Madison, so I'll take three first.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Today, there's this report, obviously, very exciting reading, of the opportunity to develop the Bob Avdey Art Gallery in the, not only original, the national tourist attraction, but an international tourist attraction with one of the biggest names in all of this art. I think we've also got the opportunity here to be driving force behind the Norman Cornish trail, which can only go for this town and bring in people in. I'm wholeheartedly behind the recommendations of the report, and I will move the recommendations, obviously, to the day from councillor Madison first.
Thank you very much, councillor Madison.
Mr. Chair, I'm absolutely delighted that finally this council has considered using the gallery as a Norman Cornish gallery, particularly as on the 8th of July 2010, when the original proposal went in from my husband, ex-councillor Madison, and acknowledged by the town council on the 12th of July. The original idea for the gallery was for it to be the Norman Cornish gallery. Obviously, we did deviate into other areas. For a part time, councillor Madison also indicated that it would be a good opportunity to use the trail, such as the old mining trail that features on a lot of Mr. Cornish's artwork. So, you know, it is good that the council now is recognising the original proposal. But it's also important to consider the amount of work that ex-councillor Madison did, as well as George Teasdale, as well as the late councillor James Smith, in looking at ways of trying to promote the gallery. It's just unfortunately that we deviated along the line. I would, however, like to just ask for some clarification of what our position will be with regard to the Northumbria Gallery, and also the fact that the Cornish family have exhibits at Aitkirk School as well, Breykirk School, you know, how does that affect us as regard to displaying the artwork? But in regard to it, I would really, really proselytically, wholeheartedly second to any motion.
Okay, thank you, councillor Madison. Just before bringing in councillor Gellard, I'd also like to say, answers to some of your questions from, from the start. Just to reiterate, councillor Madison, it might just be in the way you were, but just to be clear, we are, as you've shown, column on 35, this is in the balcony of the gallery, let's be clear, this art gallery as created by this town council is the Bob Avdey Art Gallery. The proposal from Mr. Anderson's report is to name a section of the gallery, the Norman Cornish sweep is determined by column within the Bob Avdey Art Gallery.
Yes, Chair. No, I was trying to...
Just want to clarify, because it sounds as if you thought we were reading it. Councillor Gellard?
That's, that's pretty much what I was going to say, also, the general, I was just going to pick up on that. I don't think we're here to be concerned with who's idea it was and when it was an idea, the family who owned us after Norman Cornish did, and that's just a part of this, and I think we should jump on it, regardless of what's going on in the past, and who's idea it might have been, and they want to take that for us. I think it's a great idea, and I think we should go ahead with it.
Okay, now, with reference to councillor Madison's questions, I believe, regarding of other bodies that may have been involved with this proposal, should we worry, I can answer, yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, for you, Chair. Yeah, I understand why you asked that for questions, councillor Madison. The conversations that have had, or we've had with the Cornish family, is that the Northumbria University continued to hold occasional exhibitions, as they would in London as well, whether they would continue to build in the school that we named upon Monsieur, they haven't indicated that. But there would continue to be a number of limited exhibitions of Norman Cornish's work, however, there are no other plan than the opportunity for Spennymoor Town Council to have what is being described as a permanent collection. The permanent collection of art would be, I'm making the assumption that we would use our current collection, and that would be enhanced by additional pieces of work that Newca, Northumbria University would supply us to be dating, and that would be refreshed on a regular basis with a limited number of pieces of art for sale, or that's how it's being described to us. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much for that, Colin. Now, that's been proposed and seconded, with your indulgence from the chair, the suggestion, a white American fellow members now, Colin, is worth it, and that it's I E, for instance, the Norman Cornish sweep, members will be aware, with the areas of the gallery, in the Bob Avdey Art Gallery, we have the James Smith room, and the Robert Heslop room, members' sweep would be proven to, rather than use the word sweep, it would be appropriate.
Same matter.
Are additional members comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was... Thank you very much. We go to the most, certainly, among the four out of the remaining five agenda items, are certainly speaking of the normative area of the Finance and General Purposes Committee, but I'm mainly going to concur to the previous agenda item, the time our nature of the nation privacy and in some cases of the agenda items, the time our nature of response, that I was actually happy to use till yesterday, because we had this requirement. In fact, a very important heading number five, Durham County Council Budget Consultation 2015-16. You see, the Associate E-mail Secretary-in-Chief Executive, we did discuss this last year, the major term council budget consultation. You can see there, at the bottom of page one of the E-mail printed off by Mrs. Fryer, I will say 16.23 million pounds of series to balance the 2015-16 budget. Point of note, which is totally pertinent for ourselves, you will see that Cabinet days, they say, have agreed to extend the overall council tax reductions going forward over the financial year. I'm sure we're doing a point out, fellow members, that we all have lots to learn in central government, we are still the agenda continuing, I think, you know, any raiders amongst us will be prepared for any further detrimental cuts which will have an impact on our town council, such as ourselves, in the future. But we are being asked the deadline, you will see there, is the 15th of January, which is this Thursday. Any comments on item five?
Now, Chair, as I say, it's only to the ears, if any of the members feel that they wanted to put a comment forward, is to submit it to the town clerk, with time being on quickly.
As I said, no.
Same matter.
So, I'm down there to speak. Yes, okay, I was going to give the council some, but I did have a proposal from everybody. So I'm conscious of what councillor Smith said, and I think we should speak about this before meeting. I would like to ask a question, the council has asked a question, why is Spennymoor not receiving the proportion of new homes for us? In 2015-16, Durham County Council will receive, countywide, 8,300,000 new homes for us. The cumulative since 2011, that will be 23 million pounds. Although I've been unable to get sensitive of Spennymoor, I calculate that this year alone, new homes for us of Spennymoor will be 750,000, making 2,250,000 the cumulative and, excuse me, and continuing to rise. The new homes for us was introduced by the government to encourage housing. The government recommends we do not insist that the money be spent in the locality of the new homes. At present, all new homes for us money goes into the general fund deal, and not directly to the areas of growth. We have four building sites operating in Spennymoor, reducing houses and adding the pressure of our infrastructure. We should have to do this money. Now, I'm sure council forces got some people here, and what I'm going to say is, to make the new homes for us available, the government took it from the allocated grant to Durham County Council. Since we started in history, Durham County Council has lost out by 10 million pounds on that voluntary grant, a net loss of 1.7 million. However, it is our infrastructure that is under pressure, since there can't be anybody denying we could do the new primary school. I propose that the council respond to the consultation, saying that we should have the proportion of the new homes for us for Spennymoor for infrastructure in Spennymoor. Any questions? Well, I'll... Well, I had a proposal in the second from Council Graham, that individuals, this is just an individual should respond, so, I wish to proceed, fellow members.
But when the Council Thompson didn't have a second at all.
Yeah. Second, Council Thompson.
Okay, so we are in amendment, we might just understand what it is we're taking the amendments there. All is in favour of Council Thompson's amendment? Your hands. Okay. Okay, so that's the original call of the motion, proposal from Council Graham, is that individual members, as the members...
We just, we just kind of, so goes on the minutes, please.
I do trust the diligence of competence, or take it, Council Thompson, again. Yeah, so all is in favour of Council Graham's second proposal, and members responded individually. I'm sure all is pleased and further. Okay. Head number six, Durham Police and Crime Commissioner, emailed 58 December 2014 from Srag, Srag or Sidal, say the E-mail from our Police and Crime Commissioner, Mr Hulk, called me accordingly, inviting you to a Police and Crime Commissioner consultation event, 25th, Friday 30th of January this year, at County Hall. You can see there what the overarching of the event is, the program engagement between our PCC and the likes of ourselves, town parish councils. Event's time, it's a consultation relief for Police and Crime on 2015/17, and the proposals for the police increase of the 2015/16. Not the date of time, who are invited by Ronan Moore to go and play at the event.
Move it, Chair.
I did just as a side, just say an email, a personal email, a couple of times afternoon about this, to remind, of the issue of the presets, or lots from the air, pace, or just the other members, we have to say that it's well worth it. Head number seven, we've got Sidal, head number one, because I've dropped out on the flight ticket, and I can tell all the councils, well, I'll give them observance of the E-mail to start, we did actually deal with the flight ticket issue, like last week's FNG, pay records from our council, really did agree to the latest proposal, that we would raise that in the platter of our fellow parish councils, by the local parish councils, for, I would like to square off that.
Second one.
Thank you. Head number three, Durham Mining Museum, last, from the civil elect, dated the 1st of December 2014, sorry, from the governor of Portugal, for the platinum silver, I'm sure members have taken time to make that, but just to summarize, similar to the E-mail that I was in terms of the history of coal iron in Northern Portugal, they wish to preserve that history, and pretty much, I think everyone would have wanted to be aware, and I think the town, Durham specifically, and the town hall with the Durham Mining Museum, I think it's a wonderful, a wonderful comment on the way that we've got our mining museum as done, and spending away, and not such an issue as company attention, and paid them on, on to go. And you can see there that they would like to come and visit, present the project, and so on, and they would like to present that project to either small group of local students, or several people living in the community, we'll say, you know, elder residents of our community, and it's a group of twenty-four students, four teachers, and the headmistress of the school. Any comments? Uh, to Council Galad.
This one, is this connected to the Obindos charity, the council's own, or...
What's the Council on?
Is it Obindos charity?
Yes.
Connecting the values and similar cultural experiences, I wonder if this is the first...
Obindos, so the Council on...
No.
No. Thanks for that, Council, how did you want to comment?
Yeah, yes, and just to see, obviously, another same project we've got on the horizon here, shows off just how far and wide our mining museum is, is heard of and known about. I think as a town council, we should be supporting this as much as we possibly can, and I would move that we support this venture. In motion, Chair.
Okay, yeah, Council Thompson, I used to live in a town vacation, a couple of times in the past when, well, I asked questions around the mining museum, was being told it's a standalone organization. Did this letter ask me possibly for some help, or are we taking this on board ourselves? I know Council Galad said it's our mining museum, but it's not actually our mining museum, it resides in the town council offices. So I just wondered if the involvement of the mining museum in presenting, I think they presented this letter to us as the organization who is looking to the help of city. I just have some comment on that, obviously, Chair.
What I can tell, based on the yellow bit of paper, from the front of you, Council Thompson, it was addressed to the Durham Mining Museum, care of the Spennylough Town Council.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if anyone saw that. Town, but certainly not only the colony, not only the...
Yes, Council. Thank you, yes, this has come in from the volunteers of the mining museum, and the council asked to support with the venture, and just to clarify, what I meant by our mining museum, I was thinking, the our as in spending away was mining museum, I don't just look internally as the council, and externally for the people's spending away, it's our mining museum, or the people's spending away.
I know exactly what you mean, Council Galad, thank you.
I know exactly what you mentioned, but I want to clarify, which is deeply obvious, is at the mining museum, mere representation to us, or I mean, obviously, they say to the mining museum, care of us, we deserve an official representation from the mining museum for us to help them, then you might be our separate organization, that's all. Just wanted clarification.
The letter has come in to the town hall, because the Durham Mining Museum happens to be there, so the town hall is over there, the letter has been passed on to the office, and the proposal is that way as the town council assists the mining museum facility and this.
That's nice.
It was, it was, just to say, we probably put terms over again, in the council's declaration of interest, and if you've ever been to the mining museum, I'm just putting that out there. Thank you.
Good answer, Robert.
Clarification, can I just ask, is it the intention for us to finance some of this, as a request from the mining museum, or is this simply to welcome these people to the ownership?
Just to try and leave things up a little bit, the concept of this is, Durham Mining Museum, they're a registered charity in the law right, and they occupy part of our building under licence. Basically, they're in there under our permission. What's happened is, this has come in to the Durham Mining Museum, care of us, it's addressed to them, they open all their own boards, it's not a matter of town council boards, Durham Mining Museum secretary opened it, read it, discussed it with his committee, and basically said, well, look, if we're going to do something, if it is this, we really need the town council's support, because we're only here under licence, can I refer this to the council for their consideration? And all they're asking for is for us as a town council to support them in response to the letter, to say, yes, in principle, we're happy to accommodate this visit. There's no financial implications at the moment, if and where there are any financial implications, who would require a decision of this council? All they do really is, a matter of courtesy, inform us that, you know, this is obviously something that's good for them, the mining museum, which are a registered charity, it's also good for the town and the town council, because we host that facility, that's all it is. If there were any further implications, financial or otherwise, then we would have to be agreed by the council.
Thanks for that, you, town, but I'll repeat again, finish on the chairman, right, on a positive note, wonderful, wonderful advert from our town. Many thanks to the mining museum for helping, direct otherwise, put Spennylough on the map with regards to European, you'd similar mind, you'd be similar back to European to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there one happening? Yeah, well, we'll take that. It just has to consider the letter, I suppose, Council, um, the proposal...
I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that we support in principle the idea, and that this, if there are any further financial implications, there's some back to the financials.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Okay, I saw my papers, so I'll move further. Thank you. Finally, the agenda is now consultation of the local council referendum on council tax. We have a report from Finance and Administration Manager, David Smith, for the town, and town council's vote.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Essentially, this consultation came in on the 1st of December, very shortly before Christmas, with a very tight time scale, ordinarily, it would have failed on Finance and General Purposes agenda beginning after the deadline, rather than call especially financially, because it's a cross committee, with the indulgence of Councillor Graham, the Chairman of Finance and General Purposes, who brought it here. Essentially, very important, we do respond to this, because actually, what they're asking is what we think about whether or not it would be appropriate to introduce the referendum principles that apply to principal councils to ourselves. So the big console, there are two questions, and given the time we're offered, forgive the joke, it is a bit like asking turkeys to abort the Christmas, because it's coming for Christmas, and I don't think that there'd be many large town councils that provide the range of services that we do, that would actually think that this was a good idea. So, the purpose of Mrs J. P.'s report is to seek your approval, to basically respond on the basis of the proposals set out in paragraph two of the report, I feel, first of all, we draw to their attention that it's not really the greatest time to start a consultation period, that's less than a month long, where most town parish councils, and indeed principal councils now, because of cross committee measures, actually flows down to the Christmas and New Year period. We suggest that we actually respond to say that we don't think that it would be a good idea. If you look at point two, Romeo or five, from Mrs J. P.'s report, what she's saying is, if all buildings are being stopped, we're using the local council tax support grant, and the referendum principle is extended to the highest spending parishes, and if you don't, you've town parish councils to continue to provide valuable services at court, I would suggest we change that to would, because it would physically be affected. And you're all aware of the fact that our sector have been lobbying open to make it mandatory that principal authorities pass down that element to us, and define it as a draw. The other question they're asking is whether or not town parish councils, whose firms have been highlighted in the public interest report, should be actually required to be subject to referendum. I know Mrs J. P. has touched on that, I would suggest that in addition to what she suggests we can respond, we say that in relation to those councils that are found to be interest, found to be, have been highlighted in the public interest report, that each council should be looked at on its own merits, because I'm concerned that I can think of at least one council not too far away from us, that could find itself unfortunately in the position of having a public interest report made as a result of actions of individual members, not actions taken by the council as a whole. So I think that we should basically say that each case should be looked at on its own merits in relation to that aspect. I think it's important we respond, I would ask that if members agree Mrs J. P.'s recommendations with that caveat, our high eye to the public interest reports, that you withstand notice so we can get some of them tomorrow evening, please.
I'm good, town, I'm fairly with you, there is a comment about the maybe, sure. Council Galad, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I have to say that I'm very not surprised by the comments of the minister in southern Ireland, as before, the government have been on good formula regarding principal authorities, and capital the amount of principal authorities from raising council tax, and stands to raise that those councils that will have to raise drastic costs, costs which are standard for decimated services in the north east. But recently, earlier than maybe, a lot of pressure that's on the NHS, because councils have had to cut their care charges, and when the councils are struggling to provide something as necessary as a care package for an ill or disabled or elderly person, then stands to raise that they're not going to be able to pass as much money down to our sector, the town and parish level. So if our sector have maintained our services in the way we provide them, without the level of support we've had from principal authorities in the past, then stands to raise that some of the authorities in our sector down the country have had to raise them our tax by quite some drastic amounts. Quite frankly, I'm pleased with consultations, lady and George, as the town class pointed out, the convention began a couple of days before we shut the office for Christmas, and it finishes this Thursday, so thank you, women, for a nice long consultation, ladies, where we can really consider this. I agree, it's time for the proposed response to the finance and management, and the amendments that the town class suggested there. I'd like to finish by saying, I promise it, on Spennylough Town Council, the council have been financially groomed over the past few years, and we've looked after our council tax payers as a result. In the last six years, spire drastic changes for the local government finances, we've had a zero percent increase in four of them, we've had a single increase for this current year of two percent, and we're only planning at this stage, from the draft, the draft budget, a 1.99 percent increase in the coming year's budget. As things get worse, and we lose more money to the principal authority, which should happen, as the county council get tighter and tighter, we'll get more pressure, and we'll have to make more difficult decisions as well, but I'm pleased we're not at that stage, and I would move to accept the response to the consultation, as I'll find as a report, with the suggestions that the town class has made, and that we withstand the orders for immediate action. Second one, Chair.
Second one, I'm sure the council, I'm sure the centre of the group who didn't pay any technical due counsel, such as I was from practice, have been a consultation. Is that all, Sir? She isn't, Council Madison?
I think three on this report is asking members to vote in approval of Congress, in actual practice, Councillor Galad, and he has not yet voted for the final budget, and as such, we cannot agree the fact that, you know, we, on point six, just a council meeting, when it was written in draft budget, it was agreed to increase the town council's portion of the council tax by 1.99 percent. That was only a draft proposal, has not been formally agreed, and on that basis, we can't accept that part.
Yeah. Council, this council...
I believe Council Madison is actually incorrect, whereas we haven't set the final budget yet, what we have agreed to is a precept increase, that's the only thing we have agreed to, Council. I made that very clearly when I moved to the last council, and I expect that all day to come, and say to the next council. We have agreed to this.
That's, that's, that's also, I just don't necessarily agree with the budget, I guess, but that is my understanding, all right?
Can I come back on that? I was present at that meeting, and I did not vote for a council precept increase of 1.99 percent. We want, and in fact, I did raise at that meeting, that we normally have this report submitted in the beginning of February, and as such, we would be voting then, because if members will recall, there were certain issues with council, there were some issues itself with regard, and I did as well, with regard to issues on that budget, we have not formally agreed a precept increase at this point in time. This is a first draft budget, there was...
I'll put it, I'll just put it out there. Great respect, Council Madison, we are now getting a debate about what we may have been at the previous meetings. The issue, the issue is the consultation, that is very important, the agenda of the issue.
Second one.
Yes? No questions? Okay. Council Galad, towards Mr Cobby, who responds to the law, standing on his hand. I'm not fair to business owners, you gentlemen, I understand you are very much here, tired of it.